Okay, the fence is gonna go along.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So I am right here. So from this to right here, you're saying it's about five hundred and forty feet?
It's five sixty actually at that corner.
Okay, alright. And this is some kind of fifty foot?
Yeah, that's the solar setback for the for the solar.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Other comments, suggestions?
I do. So back to the, since I first came to the meeting, what is the release of Tesla and BOSS from this site?
What is Tesla?
If you were, the documentation that I provided has numerous studies. They study different types of projects. The one that would be most applicable was the one that was performed by the the Mass C E C. And it basically demonstrates that at the edge of a solar array, I think the distance was two hundred feet, with the equipment pad set in two hundred feet, the emission at the edge of the array is less than what you experience running household appliances. The information that you provided that was published by the American Cancer Society again says that, you know, and it speaks to actually high tension or high transmission power lines that the the electromagnetic field that you experience directly under those lines is greater than what you experience running certain household items. With setting the the equipment pad in excess of five hundred feet from the property line, again, the documentation's been provided where the it's the EMFs that you're exposed to are certainly negligible and less than what you would experience making coffee in the morning with a coffee maker or running a vacuum cleaner.
Well, that's the paperwork I gave you, as I said when I gave it to you. That that is talking about power lines. This is a concentrated industrial, as stated in the information you gave me, that it does say it's an industry.
Sure, and I would just offer this, that high transmission power lines are emit a significant amount more of electromagnetic field than a solar array. Just based on the the power generation itself.
Is there any release of anything coming from the back of the panels?
I don't know specifically from the back of the panel. What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Like where it goes into the ground.
From the backside of the panel, from the backside of the panels, is there any electromagnetic release?
No, the panels themselves have string inverters on them and they all basically feed to the equipment pad. So all of the studies that were provided are specific to the distance the equipment pad is set back. And so again, when you go through those studies, it's the distance that require, the distance required, the distance that is required from an equipment pad to be set back from the edge of the array. I think we're twice, I believe, what's in the C E C study itself. And so, you know, if I have a quantifiable measurable amount for this particular project, I don't. But I do know that the information provided certainly demonstrates that with the equipment pad located here, there's going to be no EMF emitted that's going to be detrimental or measurable at your property, even at the edge of the array itself.
And what about radio waves that was asked of you from the Conservation Commission?
You know, I've done, I've done research and I can't find anything that speaks to whether or not solar farms emit interference with radio waves.
Just go under a tension wire in your radio, AM radios.
This is a tension wire.
So a tension wire.
No, I know, but it's energy.
A tension wire hooks up energy and moves it between a coal plant, a dam, a nuclear facility. We're harnessing solar power, converting it to energy and moving it onto those high tension wires. It's a different amount of electricity that's being moved, completely different.
So where are the wires that go, how does it get to the high tension lines from the?
Sure, we have, everything internally is fed underground.
Oh, it's underground?
Yeah, and then it comes towards the project frontage. And as we noted, there's a, we're crossing the stream here. And so at which case we have to go above ground to a series of poles and then it connects to an existing pole out in the Brook Street, Pine Street, right on the corner.
Yeah, not the, not the free.
The high tension wires are there, they cross down Brook Street.
Right, yeah, no, we're.
Those types of poles.
No, no, we're a typical utility pole that you would see on the side of the road, three-phase wire.
Yeah, okay.
And what is the size of that pond?
This one here?
Yeah.
Maybe less than ten thousand square feet, something to that effect.
What's the measurement by you?
Yeah.
Well, not for the best weight.
It's roughly, say, eighty feet by little more than, so say a hundred by eighty feet roughly. It's kind of an awkward shape, but if you were to square it, it'd be roughly eighty by a hundred feet.
How, how much time, you had said it before, would it take for the water to flow out of that so it's not a mosquito even? What is the approximate time?
Sure, we're required to provide calculations, which we did, which prove that that infiltration basin drains within seventy-two hours. So that particular basin, after twenty-seven hours, it's empty.
So I would like to get our legal counsel's opinion on the right of way. I would also like to have somebody from G Z A sitting here when we make our final, take a vote. Now, you are still before the Conservation Commission regarding?
Next week, correct.
And we have a meeting on December fifth as well.
Yes.
And your time is?
Seven thirty.
There goes the seven thirty, so.
So.
I would like to continue this meeting until six o'clock next Wednesday because we can have these minor details wrapped up and we can have a legal opinion and then we can get on with a vote.
Well, I thought we were gonna wait for the conservation result, which is after your.
We can vote contingent on their their approval. If it's the same night, I mean, it's just a timing issue.
So you can.
What if there's something else we need to say after that? Why can't we, can we wait until the following meeting?
We'll decide that next Wednesday. I don't know what outstanding issues there will be on Wednesday.
Well, I don't know with the conservation, but that was after this.
Yeah, but it will be subject to them.
Our vote will be conditional upon their approval. So.
But can't we?
You can have every opportunity at the Conservation Commission to issue your concerns.
But I'm saying back here to you before we, what I'm asking is, we gave them the courtesy of having an extra meeting and I'm asking you the courtesy of the following meeting.
So you wanna, you wanna us to have another meeting after the next meeting?
Correct, but not of the same day, of the following meeting.
Our next meeting, that's the fifth, the next meeting is on the nineteenth. And I think we'll make that decision on the fifth because I don't know that there are going to be any outstanding issues. And I believe that by the fifth, the Conservation Commission will have a good idea and so will we, which direction they're going. And I don't think that we need to talk about the same issues again, and I don't believe that there are any.
The same issues that aren't getting addressed though.
They are being addressed, you're not listening to them.
I am listening to them.
It doesn't sound like it.
They are not asking things that we had asked. They're not putting the measurement on the thing. Every day, every time we come back here, we have to ask them, what are the measurements? Because you're not giving us the measurements.
The measurement is, there are measurements on the plan. There is one measurement that you're asking for. On December fifth, could you put the fifty-foot setback on the plan?
Yeah, if you show me exactly what you would like, I can give you any measurement that you would like.
I believe it's on the plan, it's just that it's buried in so much detail that we can't see it.
Sure, the fifty-one point four feet.
The fifty-foot setback.
Sure, from the property line?
From the property line.
To the outside edge of the Arborvitie.
The fifty-foot setback at, what is the requirement by our bylaw?
A hundred feet to the panels.
And it is shown on here. Now, you want to have a fifty-foot setback, he can draw a line, but it's not gonna change anything. I understand your concerns and I don't disagree with them, but in many respects, our hands are tied. And we can delay it for another two weeks from from next week, but it's really not gonna change a lot.
And we have, would have the pleasure to look at them again.
Well, I understand, I do understand that T J Solar. Could you spell your name, please?
I'll give you my card.
Thanks.
Peter, I'm sorry, there was one gentleman right here who had one question.
Probably simple.
Sure.
Brian Bierman, the energy that's generated, is it used by our town? So the way it works is, because Massachusetts passed that law saying that towns couldn't prohibit this because the the electrical grid is is in horrible disrepair. They need electricity very badly and this is a renewable resource that has a very small carbon footprint. And so all the energy that goes back to the grid ultimately gets used by everyone. So some of it, yes, but not, it's not specific. There are ways that the town can take advantage of it, there's tax benefits, but they can also, like net metering, there's a way that the town can actually do something to net meter this electricity that's generated to have a benefit to them later on, but that wouldn't have anything to do with this. So there's no real significant financial benefit from this?
There.
When I first heard about it, I thought the town was putting this up. I'm like, oh, so I'm curious how much the benefit of this was.
There are two benefits, there, there's one benefit to the town that's obvious and one that's maybe not so obvious. The obvious benefit is that the town, this is all taxable, so we expand the tax.
That's the financial benefit.
That is the financial benefit. The other benefit that's not as obvious is that that piece of land could support forty or fifty houses, three-bedroom houses.
Sure.
Four kids, three kids.
I live in a neighborhood like that, I get it. And this uses no services once it's been maintained.
And, and so that is the other benefit, it's being used for that. It's also not being used as an agricultural use and there are many agricultural uses that are allowable on that lot as well.
I think a forgotten benefit as well is understanding the community's goal to become a green community. This project only bolsters the town's portfolio and enables them to qualify for grant money and support, which will only help the town implement clean energy solutions in municipal instances, which are targeted to save the mon, save the town money long-term, over the long run. And so although it's not an immediate tangible benefit, like the increase in the the tax revenue, it is a long-term benefit that this project in conjunction with the other projects help work the town towards meeting its goals as far as that, as far as the green communities act.
Just one last statement. It's just my opinion and I'm not a solar engineer, but it seems to me that companies, whoever the company is that's putting this in, I would like to see them all over the parking lots like they do at the school. I think that's genius, put them over the parking lots, you know. Do you, do companies like this look for, or does the planning board sort of put that bug in people's ear that, let's cover a parking lot instead of woods?
We don't look for projects.
I know, I know. But, you know, how that came about at the school, I'm not sure, but.
Every, every project's different depending on the thresholds and the expectations of generation. This is something that is more towards gearing into, like Attorney Vitello said, feeding back to the grid, whereas a lot of times the solar arrays you see, especially in the parking, is, you know, for a local use.
I see.
Net metered and then, you know, if you're giving back to the system more than you're using, then you get a credit long-term. So that's more of a private, if you will.
I have a question, a question.
Sure.
I have a table, dang, wood circle. From the left, on the left-hand side, I know we didn't talk about that. As, where the solar panels end, I know you can see it better on the first map, they have all the color.
Sure, yeah, you want me to flip to that?
Yeah, it just makes it a little easier. So where that blue area ends or whatever, circle in yellow.
Yeah.
The section to the left of it, all of the woods over there, that's gonna be untouched.
Correct, it's all wetland, so that's, that's, that's protected by the local bylaw and also by the state wetlands protection.
So I just wanna make sure, like, in the future, it's not something that would be expanded upon even though it's in your
Absolutely not.
of property.
Just explain the limit of work line.
The limit of work? Well, yeah, I mean, we have a, so we're before the Conservation Commission, which really dictate how close you can get. Like I said, they're protected, so we'll never be able to expand into the wetland and the town has a pretty strict twenty-five-foot no-touch and so that's our limit of work.
So as far left as it is now, that's as far left as it's gonna go?
Correct.
It's not gonna continue to go?
Yeah, there's, this lot, this portion of this lot is not buildable. For, for, for all intents and purposes, it's just not buildable.
And just one more question too. What is the environmental, like, for the habitats of animals that live there in that nine-acre lot? That, I notice a lot of wildlife back there, that's right in my backyard. So what effect is that gonna have on the local surrounding areas for the the displacement of the animals or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, sure, and a little bit more geared to conservation, but we've submitted a development impact statement which speaks to, you know, we're implementing some interesting things here, creating what they call a forest edge habitat, which promotes biodiversity, especially when you have a swampy wetland in a forest. Introducing pollinator and wildflower mixes create, this is a quote-unquote pollinator-friendly site. Massachusetts does not regulate that, Vermont is the only state that currently does, but they have a set of criteria that if a project implements certain things, it creates a viable habitat for obviously honeybees with the name, but also nesting birds and again, an edge meadow habitat, which is an increasingly rare habitat, particularly in New England with all the ag uses and whatnot. You don't have a lot of undisturbed open meadows. And a solar array like this, it's limited to maintenance quarterly at best. Really creates kind of a quiet sanctuary, if you will. And by implementing some seed mixes, adhering to the setbacks mandated by the Conservation Commission, and also the fact that we're being reviewed by the peer reviewer, you know, would demonstrate that the project is not gonna have an adverse impact to that wildlife.
And that's something that will be maintained because obviously we all know what New England winters and, you know what I mean, stuff to bring, so whatever things die, that it's gonna be, you know, replenished or, you know, it's not just gonna be left to, you know, just die or.
Like vegetation or?
Yeah, just in general, like you said, like that meadow, whatever, but it could be wiped down one winter and if it's not replenished, you know what I mean, all that, what you guys say you're bringing to the area would be null and void because then it wouldn't be, you know what I mean, I'm trying to come across as.
Yeah, no, we have an operation and maintenance plan which specifies maintenance and, you know, if an area of, let's just call it turf for lack of a better term, dies and starts to create a problem or erosion or something, they're required to reestablish it per the, per the long-term operation and maintenance plan.
And that's over the twenty-year lease of the property?
It's part of the plan. So the plan exists past the lease.
Okay.
There's also space under the fencing to allow for small animals to have access. Are the panels low in the ground or are they elevated?
Depends on the angle, the final angle, but typically they're roughly three feet on the low end.
They start like around here, same?
Yeah, no, no, they're, they're the larger panel with the larger racking systems, but it ranges, depends on the set angle.
So what is the height?
It's like three feet on the low edge and I think a typical angle would be eight, seven and a half feet on the higher end.
So the highest the panel will be, is seven and a half feet?
Again, it depends on the, the angle that they set the array at. When they come in and do a project like this, they'll come in, they'll do some preliminary clearing and then the company installing it will actually do a shading analysis with a helioscope and they'll go around and they'll figure out, okay, where does it make sense to build? What angle is my optimum angle so that when they install them, you know, these.
What's the highest they?
You know, I think the highest I've, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, I don't wanna throw a number out there without not knowing it.
I've been on several solar sites in this town and typically it's just over my head and I'm six feet tall. And if, if, I would imagine the angle for the solar systems down the street or around the corner aren't gonna be varying that much.
Yeah, you get to a certain height and then you start self-shading the panel behind it.
So you're saying the fence, what would you see about the fence?
The panels would not, I mean, again, that's, that's a tricky question because depending on where you're standing, the grade that you're standing at and the perceived grade, it might throw it off a little, but all things being equal, the top of the panels would probably be roughly at the top, would be at the top of the fence, along the back edge of them.
And below the proposed screening.
I'm sorry?
And below the screening. Screening's designed to be at least fence height and higher, the seven to nine feet green giant Arborvities.
And that black vinyl is the whole width of the fence?
Yes, top to bottom and we've, you know, again, Joe, you and Mark, we've strung it along the front tire side and down. We're confident that the screening is gonna shield it, but you know, again, we're trying to blend into the neighborhood and a steel chain-link fence is not blending in, and so that's why we've gone with the black-coated vinyl. The reforestation, the screening with the Arborvitie. That is gonna give you the screening and protect your view corridors more than increasing the existing buffer because we all saw, you could see straight clear through that when we were standing on the equipment pad when it was originally located centrally. You could see right out to everyone standing in the right of way for the Brook Street extension, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
If the board decides to deny it, they would appeal, right? Who would they appeal to?
They would appeal to the, to the state, the court system.
The court system.
Court system, and we would have to hire an attorney to support our denial. They would hire an attorney.
Now, if you approve it, and the Conservation Committee approves it, it has to go in front of the select, selectmen?
No.
It's, it's a done deal.
Unless somebody else appeals it.
Well, it's a done deal at that point, right?
No, the neighbors could appeal it.
So, so where would I appeal it to?
The same place.
The state?
Superior court.
Superior court.
And there's a statute that says that if an appeal's frivolous, you'd have to pay a fee. Just keep that in mind.
Pay your fee?
Yes, so if.
So your legal fees and our legal fees.
So if we, so if we.
If it's frivolous.
Right.
So if we deny, if we deny and they appeal,
Right.
then we would hire an attorney.
Right, I.
Then we would lose.
Yeah, I know you would lose. I, I know it's like chasing your tail.
Well, the law is the law. Just as, just as if you were to appeal, you would, you would lose.
And if you appeal, they still have to hire an attorney.
Right, and I, and I do understand that your company, T J Solar, is under some severe time constraints at this point with the incentives that the state is offering. I understand. I'm just trying to get in my mind clear what the policies and procedures are for you to follow or if I choose to follow.
Contact an attorney.
The, but isn't, it was select woman Gulab who said, no matter what your decision is, it's gotta go in front of the select.
If they request a, a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement, then they would go before the selectmen to negotiate that agreement. If they have decided to just pay the assessed taxes on it, then there's no, there's no reason to go before the board's select.
That, see, that was confusing. We were under the impression that it was.
No, no, only if they are trying to get a tip, tiff agreement or a pilot agreement.
Okay, thank you.
So would anyone like to continue?
I will make a motion to continue this meeting to December.
December fifth?
December.
December fifth at six o'clock.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, I appreciate all your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
Email us the best.
You got best, yeah, that's.
You were going to give me your card, would you spell your name?
Well, maybe three years. We had the total bylaw. Yeah, about three years.
They would have, you know.
I was making a headway, Chris. I was awfully confused after I seen the names that she printed out. It was more confused than when I left the woods, I'd say. I wanna talk to the.
Stella.
Thank you.
Well. Have a good night.
I want you to talk to the. Come on in, okay?
Shut up.
These people here, they live on Maris Lane.
That's completely underwater.
Maris Lane.
We're always second.
We must not be the worst, right, so.
That's why I was saying, that's why I put this, this, I would do it, no problem at all.
Don't you think accomplished today?
No.
You go to the planning board.
We just listened to the.
Oh, God, I mean, how many different ways?
We did not have a recess.
I went out to the site today. I'm coming back beautiful out there.
What's that?
My new phone.
Oh, your new phone?
Yeah, he's got a new phone.
So.
Very exciting. But I wonder where everybody.
The next item on the agenda is a review to discuss an act on Center Woods subdivision. Now, just today, maybe yesterday, Carrie Easterday and Matt Antonio went back and forth with some emailing and going back earlier in the week, Matt wanted, Matt requested that we allow, that we issue permits even though the fence around the settlement pond is not up and we respectfully declined to give him that option. And then we ironed out the details of the fence that is required and he says it's going to go in pretty soon and so once it's in, I can get permits, right? Wrong. Carrie responded to that request, that he also asked the payment, pay, pay the taxes on the lots, pay, update the performance bond, the legal and binding homeowner association agreement has to be in place. Directions have to be made on, as noted on the field inspection report and there has to be an ASBIL for the drainage. And after those five items are addressed, then perhaps we will start issuing building permits. I say perhaps because as time marches on, as you know, more issues raise their ugly wet heads. And we invited Mr. Antonio to come to this and as of now, you didn't see him come in and
Oh, no.
He probably came in and saw the crowds, oop, I'm out here.
I think he waits in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Because when we weren't here, he came and told you how wonderful there is.
No, that's it, go ahead.
Um I have a couple questions. So on the cost to complete. I don't have time to revise this bad line or review this bad line.
Yeah.
Um is this in addition to the bond that he has up?
And it this is the revised.
So this is so the money that we in that email change the 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 money that that he has to pay is to bring the bond up to this level, right?
Yes, so he had some money in the account already.
I I think for me.
Yeah.
What his question was, there was an existing bond.
Yes.
Is that this is in addition to what was there?
Or is this an it or is it or is he just replenishing the existing bond because it's been dwindling down from withdrawals?
Well, my knowledge is it it, the bond, we haven't withdrawn anything on the bond.
I thought that's where the.
Plowing money.
Plowing and a bunch of the other stuff that come from was from the bond.
My knowledge.
And I wanna say it's even some of the tax payments have come from.
Hmm, no, I don't.
I don't know.
Okay, so the bond's never been touched.
No, the bond has not been touched, we haven't drawn anything on the bond, my understanding. We've been drawing on the fifty-three G account to pay for like a review of field inspections, I think you're thinking of that.
Well, maybe maybe that's what I'm thinking, okay. So this.
And is that where the plow money's coming from?
The plow money, I think he pays that directly, I don't I don't pay any, I don't pay a bill on that, do you issue a bill on that?
Well, you have, you have any new this season, I mean, we haven't bow any of this with it, we haven't built it yet.
Yeah. So I. Okay.
Um so he could be paying that outright.
I think he's paying that outright because there's certain action that's required before you can do anything on a performance bond um legally.
Okay, um so then, I mean, that's fine, I'm assuming this is just to to get the bond value back into the into.
So basically, the 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 old per- the old estimate that we had, I believe dated in two thousand fifteen. This one is dated currently, so since two thousand fifteen, it's increased bec- for obvious reasons. So the increase is what the difference is, so basi- I think the rough estimate is he needs an additional sixty thousand plus dollars.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What we had around a hundred and fifty in it.
Yeah, okay, so this this is to bring it back to, okay.
Yes.
So we're bringing back up to two seventeen.
Yes.
Um can I ask about the light, there's one light on there, where does that light go? Anybody know?
Not one light where?
On the.
It's a street lighting, quantity one.
There says one street light. Anybody know about that, cause you know.
Well, let's take a look at the plans.
There's a question. Yeah.
Because there's supposed to be more than that. Right, so if there's more.
Usually the those lights will go on uh on the cul-de-sac.
It's like a regular utility light on the pole.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, alright, sorry.
I'm just saying, I don't.
Alright.
Alright, um so that that makes sense to us, the cost to complete it, it looks like everything for the most part, I don't know. Um the GZA, whatever this is, inspection report, twenty first one. Um so it looks like everything's on here as far as what's outstanding, the only thing I don't see on here. Which I thought was gonna get in line was this stuff with the bridge, you know, facade, this all that stuff. I thought that would be on just the air report.
Is that on the cost to complete?
It is.
Yes.
I don't know, is that hindering permits from being issued or?
Uh. I don't think so, I mean, at some point, that has to be addressed, at one point, when the bridge is falling down and he has to rebuild it, I don't I don't know.
Okay.
It has to be addressed, but so this. If he installs the stone facing and it's done improperly, when GZA goes to inspect that work and it's done improperly, then it will be pointed out in inspection report number seventy-two.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So whatever.
So each of these things will be inspected.
Yes, yes.
So in addition to this stuff, I have a new protocol. So now, whether it's from clearing the trees or whatever the case may be, the end of my driveway now.
Flood.
Floods, two, three inches of water, from I mean, it's not it's not going to.
I went there this afternoon and I I'm just gonna give you my suggestion or my point of whatever. And that is that they put a mess of boulders on the property line and lift the the lot next to you. So that any water that falls.
It's my water, yeah.
It is yours, you know, if it rains on your property, you are dealing with it, but whatever falls on somebody else's property. Goes onto somebody else's land.
Makes perfect sense.
That way, that's one of the things that I was thinking of of asking them to do.
Okay.
And I have asked them, the last time that I met with them there, I talked to them about that and they had no issues.
Okay.
Uh with doing that, whether or not they will or not, that's another another issue.
Like everything else, we've been dealing with.
I don't know that we can actually make them do that or I mean.
Well, they weren't even supposed to cut that lot down, first of all.
Again, it's done, so now we have to deal with whatever.
Well, my my concern is that I'm dealing with the water now.
Yes, and and the other thing that I I would actually do is have them dig a trench, remove that material and put stone in place of that. And if they go into the water table, then that water, any water that ever falls onto there, will actually seep into the ground. Tom, what do you think of that? Good idea?
One of the better ways to get rid of water, I I haven't seen the what he's talking about any.
Oh, he's.
Come back there and visit.
It's probably gone by now, but no, but.
It's actually, it's.
What's happened is all the sediment that that drained off of the lots that have been cleared, everything goes onto his. So that sediment, that silt, is there on the top of the of the lawn, doesn't allow the water to seep through if there is any kind of uh percolation there.
In addition to that, I I would like to see, and I don't know if you guys can make him do this, and I I mean, to me, there is, there should be some sort of barrier, get the silt fence hay bales between the cleared lot and my lot.
That should be, that should be there already.
I agree, which is, to me, that should be done before any permits are issued because.
Now, did the conservation commission uh raise any issues about the clearing?
Not that, I I have never heard anything from any board side, so.
I don't think they've been before them.
Yeah, they had.
I I um put a call into conservation to ask them because they are supposed to be um submitting an NOI for the. Unapproved cleared lot. I did call Charlie Mello yesterday to ask if they've received one yet and he has said no, so they're still waiting.
So they they're trying to retroactively get a permit for the clear cutting, basically.
Pretty much, yes.
Usually no permits are issued for that.
Correct, so I'm not sure what action or how they handle that, um but Charlie has, conservation has been put on notice that they are looking to get a building permit. Um and conservation is actually part of the approval process to pull a building permit as well. Um so.
Well, the the end result is.
Um they've been notified that um they're in the process of trying to pull pull a building permit and I've asked if the NOI has been pulled on that unclicked, unapproved cleared lot. And he hasn't seen anything yet and they're still waiting for one to come forward.
Well, like I said, I would think it'd be fair to put some sort of.
That that's sta- that's a standard, that's.
I know that, but.
Those are standard rules, but unfortunately, they don't know what those what rules are, so.
Okay, um so if we can get that on there on top of the other list, I think would be beneficial. The other issue that, you know, four houses.
You have, she has an email tomorrow about that issue, we're soon so that we can uh have our consulting engineers added to their list.
Yes, sir. Um the other issue that, you know, we've the four houses.
Three houses.
Four, four doesn't work, I'll take it, okay, conversations, um so I've been going over the homeowner association, which I guess the planning board has requested be updated. And going through it, and it may be just my opinion again for the being in construction, I can't say that I'm an expert, but I can't, I feel like it'd be. Say good conscience that this agreement, I don't wanna say it's valid anymore, but is it's what's happened in the development. What what we're being asked to as homeowners to be responsible for is not what we originally purchased the homes for. Originally, it was a twenty foot easement of gradual grade, not two hundred and something feet of linear pipe. To me, I I. I'm not sure how that gets rectified.
I can honestly tell you that, and I I I already told you, Lloyd, that you you really need to see an attorney in regards to that.
So. Okay, I'm sorry, could you?
No, 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 that that that's about, I don't think we can actually tell you anything or do anything for you on that part because. They you're gonna have to look at the deed of what you of what you purchased and what they are gonna be proposing to us coming up or what you have there.
Which doesn't match.
It doesn't match, and that's a problem, well, the deed should be what matches, but I don't wanna.
No, no, I I I'm so my my overall point is that, I don't know if it's something, if it's gonna get, it has to be revised either way, it's it's got the wrong person on it. Is there a way to, I don't know, is the do we do that with him directly or is the planning board responsible or anything, cause I'm assuming you guys have to accept the homeowners association. Or you guys did accept the homeowners association at the beginning of the.
Well, so.
We we are requesting a legal and binding homeowners association agreement. Now, to make it legal and binding, if it's different from what you've agreed to, you have to agree to something new. Now, if you don't agree to something new, we don't have a legal and binding homeowners association agreement, as a result, we don't have any building permits issued.
So my. So my point is, once this name changes, to me, this is a different document.
Uh the document may have may have an assignment clause that I don't I don't I'm not aware of, so that's where you need to talk to an attorney.
Okay.
To uh to make sure that that everything is copacetic.
Because I mean, ultimately, I think what's gonna end up happening, again, this is nothing to do with you guys, but I mean, in here, it pretty much says, once the you guys accept the uh the development, you know, the homeowners association can then. Ask you guys to reject it, not reject it, but to dissolve.
Dissolve, yeah, when it comes to public way, there's no no more reason for homeowners association.
Which is what's gonna happen. Yeah. Okay, so then, obviously, that's not any time to put, alright, so that would be the course of action, we take a vote as a homeowners association, we come in front of you guys and then it goes to the board's selectmen and then all that.
Can I just ask a dumb question, what was it that you guys were told that you were not paying for homeowners association?
Less than a hundred dollars a year.
I was I was.
Less than a hundred dollars.
Thirty dollars a year.
I have caught a limit, says I paid ninety-four dollars.
We had one that said thirty.
Yeah.
You got a deal.
Yeah, you sure did.
Oh, absolutely. I bet you this is gonna come up to us when we do to approve the road too.
Yeah.
Well, and there's four houses on the lot?
Correct. Well, it's supposed to be eight.
Supposed to be eight, so we'll just send a double there.
Eight, okay, so let's say that there's, let's just say there's, everyone pays a hundred a year, so that's eight hundred dollars for a year's worth of plowing and taking care of the drainage system and.
It wouldn't be plowing, right?
What's that?
It wouldn't be plowing.
Until according to the home, until the road accepted, it would be plowing.
Until the road is accepted.
So all the money in the homeowners association goes towards the maintenance of the private road.
Yeah, but that would be. That falls to the, we don't we don't come, the homeowners don't come into any, according to this, unless I I can't read, which is very possible. According to this document, we are not responsible for any of that until it's actually.
Yeah, you you usually, sometimes homeowners associations have a clause in it that says, when three quarters of the lots are built upon, then the homeowners association.
The road is accepted.
Is the developer is no longer responsible for the home, the homeowner responsibilities, they become the responsibilities of the homeowners association. I haven't read it, so I don't know that that's what that says.
I think it's a hundred percent completion.
So if it's a hundred percent, then you're off the hook, that's what, so the thirty bucks is, or a hundred bucks or whatever it is, isn't really doing much, it's just keeping you honest more than anything.
Yes. So.
As opposed to.
It it referenced, it references the planning board a bunch of times, I'm I'm just, and again, I I know we are years away from this, but this is obviously, to me, a greater concern at the present moment in time because I just, I'm very leery of. I mean, like I said, this this was under the assumption that the development was gonna be built correctly and right the first time and obviously, that has not happened. So.
At the point that the developer comes before this board with a new or revised homeowners association, at that point, we will have our attorney, our consulting attorney.
Okay.
Review it and that review will be paid by the fifty-three G account.
Okay.
That the developer has put.
Money into.
Money into to pay for things like consultant reviews, so there will be a legal consulting review of that. That doesn't mean you shouldn't look after your own interests, but this legal review will be reviewing to make sure that it is in the town's best interest to agree to whatever he comes before us. After he agree, after that happens, well, then presumably, the homeowners have to agree to it as well. And that's where your attorney comes in.
Okay.
Or your legal friend.
Well, I mean, cause that was my next, every time I talk, I mean, obviously, I've poked around with litigation, I thought it'd be stupid if I didn't. And it all, I mean, I'm sure, it always explodes, you guys need to, you need to sue Matt, you need to sue the town, you need to tell him that the house been put to the foot lower, you know, Matt never disclosed it to you at the at the. At the sales, you should, I mean, I just don't wanna get into that because to me, it's not fair to the town or, you know.
It's a mess.
Yes, so I just, I'm trying to avoid lawyers as well.
Yeah, but we're not talking about about that type of litigation, we're just talking about having a valid homeowners association.
No, 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 I know, but. Every time you try to talk to them about what's going on, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
It turns into a mess.
Yeah, we're having a hard time finding an attorney. It's it's it's.
Yeah.
No one seems to really wanna talk to us.
Nobody wants to take, once you start talking about how long this has been going on and what's been going on, it's been. Okay.
Uh there is an attorney who takes on a lot of land issues, he was the attorney that represented the neighbors when uh they, when there was a subdivision proposed for uh. The uh char- charter, the council oath.
Oh, yeah.
And I forget the name of the attorney, but he represents neighbors on a number of issues.
Oh, that's right.
He may be someone to look into.
Oh.
I forget his name, I forget his name.
That'd be great, thank you.
But I know that he's taken on.
He's still taking, you guys got a good case.
He's taken on a number of of uh.
You got a great case.
We've become your best friends.
I mean, I feel like.
You're like family.
I was bringing cookies, but.
I I I don't know.
I know, sorry.
But he's taken on some neighbors that others wouldn't have touched, so.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Um.
So.
I said he has an email.
Is this just gonna continue as emails back and forth between you and?
Well, you know, we'll see when they, we're holding the the trump card and that is we're not gonna issue them a building permit.
Okay, so um can you let us know if any other meetings are coming up?
But meantime, these people still have water coming in their yards, which is a shame, I feel that the town has failed you, okay? Not necessarily the planning board, but somebody failed Maris Lane, okay, and and the town, we're not doing anything for you.
Definitely a planning board.
I I look at my.
It's just, it's being prolonged and prolonged and prolonged.
Well, cause I even talk, I went so far, so I've got to be bluntly honest, I I talked to a realtor because if I can get the hell out of there, I can get the hell out of there and you know.
You can't get out of there.
I can't.
You'd wanna buy your house.
Well, the first question out of his mouth is what's going on with the development?
Right. Yeah, no one would buy your house, they're, it's a beautiful looking home, but.
It's a great neighborhood.
It's a great neighborhood. But I feel bad, I mean.
Well, I felt bad the other day when I drove by his driveway and I was like, oh my god, here we go.
Yeah, but I honestly believe that if they do what I'm suggesting. I honestly believe that you will still have, if we have. Three inches of rain in an hour, you're gonna have a problem there because the water is not gonna get to that thirty inch pipe.
But Joe, my problem, my my concern and problem is that I'm, that lot is probably a year or two away from them touching it.
Nah, you'd be surprised, they they're trying to get things done.
They're pushing.
They're pushing, so, so they're pushing to get new building permits, but they're not pushing to fix your problems.
Yeah.
Exactly. Right, right.
That's what they want is building permits.
Right, so they can finish it, walk away and just.
They wanna make money, they wanna spend it on.
I feel bad, I feel awful.
Do you feel that if the water from the other lots did not go into your lot, do you feel that that would work for you or what what's?
I can't see, I maybe I'm wrong, I I I don't deal enough in grading, I mean, I'm a electrician, I make life over, me and water don't mix, but as I can tell. Um I don't know, cause I I it, every time we touch this, my yard, another problem comes up.
But I do have to say that before they cut those trees down, you are not getting the water.
I had, I had some in that area.
But not as much as yesterday.
It it wasn't that much, now they they. The only, I think the only way you're gonna remedy your problem, and we talked about this today, is to move this subdivision along and develop. Those two properties and see what happens. But at the same, at the same time, make sure that the grading is not going towards your lot at all, the grading goes away from your lot. That's the fairest way to do it, cause I mean, you knew that you were buying up right from the get-go because of the grading.
I tried to warn them, I tried to warn them.
I don't know if I signed up for bull, but.
I know I came in late, and I apologize for that, we just got done over there. How long are we gonna wait until we issue a building permit or allow?
Well, there's, there's other.
Well, I just worry that if we start issuing building permits, he's not gonna take care of those things that he has to take care of.
When at least.
Like, how long is it gonna take to put a grate on a pipe?
Well, we've got to check, we've got that list, I understand that, and they're willing to pay back taxes.
I mean, we've been waiting.
Once they take care of that, then I think.
Once they take care of this and pay all the back taxes and so forth, are we gonna let one building permit go? Well, I don't know, we haven't seen the owner, we haven't seen Matt Antonio, nobody's coming before us. Let them show up and ask that question.
Oh, I know anyone to ask, so, and, and the other thing is, like, how long are we gonna wait for a grate?
Are you asking for them?
I guess I couldn't be asking for them, yeah.
The grate, they're supposed to go over the pipe that we brought, that he bought and cut and put on.
Well, I'd like to see them here asking for themselves. It's one of these bits on the list. Well, that's why I wanted them here too.
I know, but how long is it?
Right. But I, my opinion, the quicker we move and start working in the subdivision, the quicker these problems are gonna be rectified.
I just, the only concern.
That's just my opinion.
Well, my concern.
I'd like to see the owner or the project manager in before us.
My concern.
Before we give out any permits.
It would've been nice if he came, yeah.
Yeah, would've been, he can't be too concerned if he's not here.
My only concern with that is that once, I mean, you, I would say, you have to, so I, I fully agree that at some point, a building permit has to be issued. Again, I'm, I'm, we're not asking these people to stop, not be able to build houses ever. My only concern is that once the building permits begin to be issued, we, I, us as homeowners, I, I lose all my leverage.
Uh, no.
How though?
Because there's still four houses to be built there.
So you.
We're talking about issuing one permit.
Okay.
And we can make it the permit next to you. And at that time, they have to grade it to our specifications.
Okay.
Well, they're gonna file an NOI on that with the conservation commission, yet they haven't done that, that lot next to.
Correct.
They're hoping to break ground.
I'll send the conservation can put restrictions on it, the grading, to correct his problem.
Uh, I don't know that they can't, I think.
Alright, so we can't?
That's what I'm hoping for, that, that we can do that. And that, the last time I talked to them and I asked them to do that, they had no issues with that.
I know, Joe, but the problem is, is that.
They have no issues with anything, and then they just don't do it, that's the problem.
Correct, yeah, but, I'm talking, I mean, I, yeah, just speaking for myself, I'm into this thing for two, three years here, and I've been, I've heard that, I've heard that a bunch of times, and I know it's new builders. I'm, and again, I'm just, I know this is, I, maybe I'm a conspiracy theorist, but I, I still don't think that the, the guys that purchased the three lots have nothing to do with Matt and the rest of them.
Well, the other concern is that none, none of the three have licenses.
Right, you just do face.
They don't need to.
Okay.
Because they can hire a subcontractor to go and pull the permits for them.
Correct.
I mean, they could even come to me and I'll pull permits for them.
Oh, you will?
Money talks.
The cost to complete the new one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's sixty-one thousand dollars more, so.
Maybe it makes sense, I mean, some of the stuff I find hard to go before.
And we talked about it today, that if that subdivision is not completed in two to three years, we use that money and complete it ourselves.
What, what's your thoughts on that?
I agree with Woody though, and I, I agree a hundred percent, let them come in and face these people and, you know.
But they already did, they already did come in and, and faced all of us.
They're agents, they're, they're.
They're, they're agents.
They're newly, newly hired agents who were surprised at the whole thing, so.
Yeah. I don't think they were that surprised.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, they acted surprised.
Yeah.
They didn't, well, they were.
I was a little.
Yeah, well, when I, when I ever asked one of them, I said, you know, who's gonna be able to build these houses? He said, I'm gonna build them. I said, who's got the permit? He goes, um, um, cause I said, you don't have a license, um, well, my framer, I said, well, who's your framer? And he said, um, um, he told me, me, like, whatever.
I mean, two to three years to me is.
A lot.
A long time, I mean, I, I, they've been there longer than me, I mean, that's, that seems a little excessive.
I'm just sick of the, the weeds in my front yard, like, put the sidewalk in. I'm duck, either put the sidewalk in or don't put it in, but clean my front yard out, I am tired of weeds every summer, tired of it, tired of looking at it.
Is that, is that a, two to three years, is that just opinion or?
We can make it less, so in our bylaws, they gotta agree to what, three years, three years.
I don't know, it's to start or to finish.
Start to finish.
Start to finish, and, uh.
It's a three-year build on, right?
May, may already be at that point, we'll wait till we get that money and we'll take it over. I mean, that is an option, but first we have to get that money.
I'm sure that's not a, a quick snap of a finger to move either, I'm sure that's a bit of a time.
Well, it was a process, they put the money in, then it's a performance bond, so we can't just, we can't just push them out, we have to wait for non-performance to take it over, and so there's,
Oh, it is.
there's a, a legal process to go through, the.
So it would be that one building permit would be issued if all of them were done?
I, I, I agree with that, one, one building permit.
I didn't find that, but I want that, that grate fixed.
What's your lot number?
Three.
Great.
Three, what, number two?
They have no, they have, just.
They're gonna file an NOI on that.
And also, they have no engineered plan.
They, they gotta submit all of them.
No, no, I'm just saying, no, no, I'm saying, I, they're not close on two, as far as being ready.
Well, they're not close on one to five.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about having a plans for a house or anything together, they're just, cause that was, it was the first thing I asked, I'm like, why can't you just do two firsts?
I wouldn't be a bit surprised if a friend of mine moves right next door to you. I already, uh, no.
Oh, man.
I got an extra.
Yeah.
See, this should, this should've been done a month ago when we met, met with them up there, but they wanted to say, we're not paying those taxes, that's why we're here today. And they finally caved in and said, we're gonna pay them.
But they haven't paid them yet.
Oh, wow.
I'm just saying, I mean, they, I'm still, like, I'm not, I'm still waiting for a three.
Still waiting for somebody to come to my basement, fix my basement, he told me he's coming to fix my basement, still waiting.